Okay, just a second. Okay, Kuz?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Harris?
Friend.
Isom?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Seaverton?
Here.
Singy?
Here.
Would you please rise for the flag of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Under communications, we have an upper budget update that was brought back. I think that's all I see before us. Brings us down to persons to be heard. Elizabeth Martin.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Martin. I am a small business owner here in Ketchikan, Alaska. I own this store called Two Hippie Chicks down on Water Street. And I am here tonight to speak on the issue of allowing retail cannabis sales in the Ketchikan city limits. I've lived in Ketchikan cumulatively for 20-plus years. I worked in the financial institution industry for many years. Loved Ketchikan for a while, came back. And after retirement, I decided to open myself a store and and become a part of this wonderful community again, and I'm really happy to be here. So, um, with that in mind, we all know the impact of the tourism industry on our town. Without it, we likely might not be as happy as we are today. Being a small business owner, I have many consumers from all different walks of life visit my store every single year. My store is located, as you know, between birth three and four. So I get a great number of people coming into my store. And last summer, my second year in business, after the ballot measure two passed, many of the questions that I was approached with for people coming to my store had to do with cannabis sales. So after a short period of time, I realized that my entire day would be spent answering questions from visitors about the cannabis industry here in Ketchikan. So I had to actually put up a small sign in my store that said, "While it is legal to smoke marijuana in the state of Alaska, you still can't buy it." So please don't ask, and thank you very much. And that saved me a lot of time and effort in answering people's questions. The point I'm trying to make is that if I had a dollar for every time someone asked me those questions, I'd be a really rich woman right now. I'm nowhere near that. But it brings up a lot of questions about being able to legally purchase cannabis in our community. People want to come here and enjoy themselves. They're on vacation, they're spending money, they're happy, they want to continue to be happy. Many of the people who visit our town are non-drinkers. And they still want to have the ability to get off the cruise ship. And as we all know, the cruise ship industry does not allow cannabis onboard. So instantly, when these people exit the ships, they're trying to find a place to find some cannabis. And they want to do it legally, they want to do it above board. But unless and until they're given that opportunity, they'll still find it. They're going to find it wherever they find it. So why not police it? Why not allow retail stores to regulate the consumption of cannabis to persons 21 ages and over? It makes sense. Not only that, but as you probably already know, Juno lawmakers have already moved forward on regulations. They are in the process of creating these new laws and regulations right now as we speak. And I'm going to tell you, it will not take much for the cruise ships industries to identify that. Because when they get dissatisfaction of their customers on a port that is going to be known as a dry port, guess what's going to happen? It's not going to take a couple of years, and Juno is going to be the main venue. It's not going to be Ketchikan anymore because there's dissatisfied customers on those boats. So I want you to think really wholeheartedly about the demographics of tourists entering and visiting our town each year. And if I had, I tried to find how many possibly, but there's obviously nothing out there like this that would identify medical marijuana users that visit our city every year. I'm sure there are many of them. I was heartbroken this past summer when I had to turn people away that actually held legitimate medical marijuana cards. And I had to tell them, "I'm sorry, we can't do anything for you. It's not legal yet." But I know they're out there. And I know they want a safe venue to be able to purchase and consume cannabis while they're on vacation. Many of the tourists that come off those cruise ships, the demographics are out there, I'm sure I can find this too, but people our age, and when I say our age, I'm talking about 45 to 75. That's the reality of it. There has got to be many of them that are already currently on medical marijuana cards legitimately. Back in 2006, the American Journal of Public Health actually cited, and I'm going to directly quote this, "The criminalization of marijuana use may itself be a health hazard since it may expose the consumer to violence and criminal activity." Of course it will. Like I said, it doesn't matter if they can find it legally or not, they're still going to find it. Prohibition does not work, we know that. It didn't work for alcohol, it's not going to work for cannabis. If we don't legally sell it here, they will still find ways to buy it and purchase it and expose themselves to unsavory conditions to do so. With legal retail outlets, at least the criminal element is not involved. They're clearly marked, the THC levels are clearly marked. We know what we're consuming when we purchase from a retail outlet. There's no question. Anchorage is experiencing a tremendous problem right now with this so-called medic, non-marijuana that these kids are getting a hold of up there. And they're, I mean, it's wreaking havoc on the teenage populations there. I'm sure we still have the same problem here too, but at least if we're regulated. I know in my retail outlet, listen, I have a vested interest in this. It's called Paris. It's my 12-year-old granddaughter. Pretty soon, she's going to be a teenager. I know a lot of her friends, and I know a lot of her friends' families. And I can guarantee you that not one of those children, or their parents for that matter, will be purchasing in my retail store illegally. Because I'm protecting my granddaughter, and I'll bet you there are retail salespeople here that are going to be doing the same thing. We all know everyone. Nobody's going to be getting away with that stuff. And why not have us police it? People that know everybody in this community. Sure, we're going to have tourists that come off the cruise ships that want to purchase too, that we're not going to know. But we're going to have things in place that are going to allow us to safely and legally sell to persons 21 and over. In addition, I'm only going to touch on this briefly, but anyone knows that there have been various studies and tests about the medical benefits of cannabis. Currently cannabis, and very few of these I'm going to touch on because of the time constraints here, chronic pain associated with migraine headaches, cancer, glaucoma, and fibromyalgia are just some of the few diseases that are being treated with cannabis and CBD oils with great success. Used for muscle spasms caused by multiple sclerosis and epilepsy, nausea from cancer chemotherapy, this one kind of hits home to me, I lost my mom last year with it. I wish that I would have been able to not see what she went through with chemotherapy. At least be able to circumvent some of the side effects of the chemo. Even if only for one. I wish I could have done that for her. Poor appetite and weight loss caused by the effects of chronic illnesses including HIV and AIDS. This is a big one. This is being studied right now in Denmark. Incredible, incredible changes in chronic sufferers of weight loss and appetite decrease due to HIV and AIDS. Seizure disorders and Crohn's disease also have been treated with CBD oils with great success as well. You're going, I'm not going to tell you you're not going to find adverse information out there on the internet and publications everywhere because you will. But for the most part, if you read between the lines, you're going to find that those publications are driven by companies that will benefit from not legalizing cannabis or have a public interest or a private interest in it. Finally, in closing, I would like to remind the council that we as Ketchikan voters are informed and fully aware of the reasons. We feel strongly about legalization and we do get it right. We do. We are taxpaying registered voters of this community who contribute to our local economy each and every day. If you look at the faces in this council meeting today, you're going to see people out there who represent all types of walks of life. Your neighbor, your grocery store clerk, your mailman, your school faculty, and even law enforcement officials. So we don't represent the street dealer. We represent people who live and work in this community every single day. We just want to work together and make this a better place for everyone to live and to visit. And I thank you for allowing me to come before you and speak on this matter. Thank you.
Before I bring up the next person, usually the rules are about three minutes, and we'll give leeway to that. But please make your points and try to keep them as brief and yet cover all the spots you need to. James Schenk.
Hi, Ed. I didn't come here tonight with a set agenda or a written testimonial or anything other than to see that. We are following the intent of the initiative as written to treat marijuana the same as alcohol. I don't see that happening. I really don't. I understand there was an overlay created where certain areas within the town, they were not going to allow people to have legitimate businesses. Okay, well, this, when this initiative went through, it was to create a way and means where we treated marijuana just like we do alcohol and regulate it. The problem was, I don't know if anybody understands marijuana, and I'm not going to sit here and try and educate everybody, but you know, all you've got to do is watch a few TV programs these days, get online, read a book, educate yourself about what you're dealing with. Some of the biggest problems that we have with manufacture of marijuana is if it's not legal, you literally don't know what people are feeding these plants and what people are ingesting when they smoke it, eat it. There's a lot of people, I had two wives die of cancer. Both of them used medical marijuana during that time. It was illegal when I grew it in my home. I was open about it. I had police officers kick my door in, come in. I told them, I said, "My wife is on the couch, you go up and tell her you're going to take her medication away from her, and then you can put the cuffs on me and take me away." Because I refused to go out on the street and buy it and, you know, further add to the criminal element. Police officer came downstairs, every one of them shook my hand, we went out on the lawn. They said they were sorry, they had tears in their eyes. They said the laws need to change, and we didn't see anything. We'll be leaving here today. These laws that came up were directly related to medical marijuana. The reason that we're standing here today is not for all these sales, it's for a lot of suffering and a lot of things that have happened. My main problem with the entire situation is there's no access for people who need access. There's no dispensaries, there's no communication about dispensaries. There's no communication about co-ops. It's all about businesses. And I understand people have invested money in businesses in this town already, and they want to see this take off, they want to see the same kind of commerce that's coming into Colorado. And I understand the concerns of the council. But the main gist of this, of legalizing this, was to regulate it like alcohol. To take this drug that can be very dangerous, if it's misused or sold openly on the street, or it's grown at random without any, the only thing that people are thinking about is profit, the weight of a product. There's all kinds of horror stories out there, pros and cons. You can read whatever you want to read, there's going to be ups and downs with everything. But we have a chance to do something right for people. And really, that's what everybody is here for, is for people. You are here to represent the people and somehow find a way and means to accommodate both business and the people that are end-users of a product that is supposed to be regulated and treated like alcohol. Currently, I don't see that happening. I don't think there's an overlay of churches and schools that was put down to sell alcohol in this town. Maybe there should have been a long, long time ago, but there wasn't. And it doesn't currently exist. It doesn't currently exist anywhere in the state of Alaska. And for us to start here with marijuana, you are going outside of the intent of the initiative as it was written. And I think you're doing a great disservice to people that are investing already in an economy and an opportunity that they see coming up to do things right, to do things for people that use a product, whether it's illegal or not. It's been going on here for years in this town, for years. And there's a lot of things that are pro and con having to do with it. But the travesty is the people that need to have access to this as a true medicine, an affordable medicine, a medicine that works, and a medicine that should be readily available and safe for patients. No mold, no heavy metals. There's so many things that can go into this plant like any plant, and ingesting it and smoking it can cause serious and irreparable harm and further impact somebody's medical status by not allowing dispensaries to operate legally and to be regulated like marijuana. I think you're doing a disservice to this public. Thank you.
For clarification, there are regulations in regards to zoning for liquor establishments in regards to schools and churches. So there is the same, it's just maybe a different parameter. They may make it bigger or smaller. But that's following state regulations. Thank you. Keith Smith.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Keith Smith, and I'm here representing myself. I wanted to just make a few brief comments as you struggle to figure out how you're going to regulate marijuana and the sale of marijuana in Ketchikan. I don't speak as a marijuana user, but I speak as someone who used marijuana when I was in junior high school. And I speak with kids and public safety in mind. For me, when I was in junior high, marijuana was more readily available than alcohol, especially for me. My parents didn't drink. And the reasons for that is pretty simple. The vendors of alcohol had every financial incentive not to sell alcohol to me. But the people who were selling marijuana had every financial motivation to sell marijuana to me. And they also had every motivation to sell everything else they had to sell to me as well. And so it wasn't within, you know, I lacked judgment. The judgment that I lacked as a junior high school kid in terms of what I was going to put into my body and in my mind also lacked in terms of a sense of who were good people and who were bad people and who had my own, my own health, my own well-being at heart. And so it was a very short period of time after beginning to use marijuana junior high school that I was using much, much heavier drugs. And so I think I can honestly say that, you know, I don't think that marijuana really helped me realize my potential as a human being. But I'm also very certain that, without going into too much detail, that the damage that was done that I live with today had to do with the criminal class that I was brought into contact with who were selling those drugs. And I think that that still holds true. I support the legalization of marijuana and the legalization of marijuana here in Ketchikan. And I think that you have the chance to do a service to public safety by permanently removing marijuana from the control and the hands of the criminal class. Thank you.
Dennis McCarthy.
Dennis McCarthy, I'm resident of the city. And for over 40 years, I was an attorney here. And I'm trying to, I'll give you a few things that I've done to back up what I'm saying, not to make sure it be fruitful, to try and impress anybody with that. But I served on the assembly, on the school board, planning commission, and I've been on various boards and commissions around the state. It's a tough job you have on any of these things. You're going to get some people who feel very strongly, walk one way and another. I lived here as a young kid. I got here when I was, 1948. I left in 56, came back 10 years later, started working at the pulp. And from what I can tell, both socially and from the fact of my practice of 40 years and seeing what's kind of happened in the community, guess what, marijuana's been here all along. It's not a matter of, is it all of a sudden we're going to get flooded with it? It's going to be whether you can regulate it or not. And I would suggest that having it up above the horizon and regulating is a much better way to handle the situation than to be sitting back and sticking our head in the sand, so to speak, pretending it's not there. But if you will, to establish a little bit of my creds, I was on the board on Women in Safe Homes when they bought the shelter and then started upgrading it back in, I think it was 1978. I've done, and since that time, I was the attorney or on the board pretty much practically till I retired. I did a tremendous amount of work. The court appointed mainly of children in need of aid cases. Kids that are suffering through parents who have substance problems, whether it's alcohol or other chemicals. I did a lot of representation of delinquents. And guess what, a lot of those kids had issues, either with their parents being dysfunctional or with themselves. And I've done quite a bit of criminal representation over the years also. Both, I was at the contract for the city for about 10 or 12 years as a city defender and doing a lot of state representation. The, in fact, one of the things kind of interesting, a little bit of a sidelight, is I was on, I believe it was the planning commission, possibly the assembly, when they built, were planning for and built the new jail. And that's one of the aspects that comes from it. There's a financial aspect, if you will, and to the facility, by putting people, a lot of push, trying to get some of the nonviolent offenders out of the jails so you can use the jails for people who really need to be locked down. This does have an effect, these sorts of things, of, you know, decriminalization, bringing it out to sunshine and then trying to regulate it. Here's my opening comment on what you should do. The voters have spoken, both across the state and in this borough. And I think it is questionable whether you should go back and say, "Well, they didn't understand what they're doing." It might question then if they elected any of you over the last few years, did they know what they're doing? You know, it's the same rationale. And you're all very capable, and I know many of you have a number of different capacities. But that is an objective vote. Objective criteria decide what to do. Again, I say bring it out in the open, regulate it, and address the different issues. And there was a mention about prohibition. Prohibition gave us organized crime in this country. And a lot of bad things happened from that, from the big gangs back in Chicago and New York and the Northeast. And we're still trying to fight our way through that. But with the drug scene, we have that in spades in the, I can't, Chief Vengard was here, at least I looked back over my shoulder, but he was here earlier, he can give you numbers if you want him to know about it. The difference between what costs on a wholesale level in Seattle or Portland to bring your drugs up here and what they sell for in town, and again, kind of basically as a wholesale or a slight, if you were a site mark, is incredible. And that's because it's underground and people are, they're going to pay the going price. And you don't know what has happened. But it still keeps going, even at those horrendous prices. And frankly, from my perspective, seeing the harm that people are going through from some of the substances and the issues with the kids especially, I have yet, and this is anecdotal, I don't have any reports I've read on it, but I have yet to see a case where a kid got beaten on or had to be hospitalized from consumption marijuana. We have made a decision that for the public good, there was going to be prohibition and that was going to save people from demon rum, didn't work worth a darn. And it actually made, in some ways, it much worse. Yeah, bathtub gym that talked about people making up in their back of apartment. These are for things that it's happening, the consumption's there, and assuming people are going to do something to feel good, I'd much rather it was marijuana than some of these other things that are incredibly bad and could flat-out kill you. And I guess the, kind of, some assumptions about what will happen if we do this and do that. I love the argument every once in a while I get to pop up in court to the judge and say, "This one is..." Assuming facts are not in evidence, assuming that somehow this problem is going to get worse if it's being regulated, which it's not now, or that somehow it's going to increase consumption, it's going to get it down to the kids, and we're going to have much more of a problem, just isn't the case. And as I say, there is, Mr. Smith mentioned, you get a certain milieu that's going on, and they start with one drug as far as the import, the person bringing it in and selling things, and there is that old little taste in that. I've got some pretty gross experience in my life of reading police reports and having to deal with witnesses of kind of sucking people in, "Here, just a little bit, you'll like this, it's really fun, and then look what happens." This isn't that sort of case. We've decided that alcohol is acceptable and can be managed, and I suggest that that's what we should do. Regulate it, have reasonable rules, places it happened. I've been through the liquor licensing thing, transfer licenses and running into, how close are you to different types of facilities? It works quite well. This is not a complicated process. And as a fact, again, I just keep coming back to, regulate it so you have some control over it and you can watch what's happening. And one thing that's slightly off-topic, but it kind of relates to the alcohol thing. I see the chief is here, I know you're coming up to budget session, your finance managers here. I was a city defender for about 12 years. You're putting a bunch of people in jail for drinking a beer out in public, which is really shocking to tourists to understand, to see someone in Alaska have a beer out in front of them. And you, as a city, pay them the state hotel fee for everybody that's in there. They have all these people, it's automatic, they get seven days in jail. It's 10 days and three days off for good time. Each time they get arrested, they're not going to quit drinking. We just keep arresting them, putting them in, some of them, it's probably helped save their life or improve their health because they have three square meals a day in a warm cot, but they're not going to quit drinking. You might want to revisit that when you're looking at budgeting or ask your, your chief, "How many hours these police officers are putting into those sorts of things?" And marijuana is a whole offense to structure these lives, people. We can regulate it, there's a system, and you suggest you go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Wiley Allen. Mr. Allen? Or Mrs. Allen? Hello.
Yes, my name is Wiley Allen. And so I'm looking at this kind of two things. Personal freedom, democratic process, and economics, and they're kind of related because a free people should be economically free. a free people should be economically free, and if you don't, you turn into the Soviet, old Soviet Union. So I think that there's, you know, this is, you're reinventing the wheel here. They're doing this in other states. It actually shouldn't be compared to alcohol. It's a totally different situation, but since that's the path that, you know, everybody's kinda going on, okay, alcohol. But uh this city needs another way of revenue, and this is a very good one. It's tailor-made. Come to town uh like Liz says, and they're begging to buy the product. You'll make some money and uh not trying to be nanny state to everybody. I'm very upset with the way that this supposedly republican town is going like down that road. So let's just step back and rethink what exactly is you're all about here, which I think is personal treatum, freedom, personal choices, and personal consequences. Thank you very much.
Don. Wright.
Friends. Hello. My name is Don Wright. I live at seven oh seven Harris Street, council members. And this is rather morphed into something else for me. Initially, I would come up and speak to you concerning the legalities of the marijuana sales. But that's not what I really want to discuss with you this time. What I would like to discuss with you is the democratic process where we are told, from being small children, if you want to affect change, vote. Right? Well, the population of this community voted. Yes. They wanted to decriminalize marijuana. A bunch of us thought it meant legalize marijuana, but we weren't wordsmiths like the lawyers who wrote up the stuff. So it was decriminalized. And I'm thinking, "Oh, well, then it's not a criminal act to sell it if we decr- decriminalize marijuana," correct? No, that's not the way the state plays, and we understand that. But what we have here is we have a community who voted for the decriminalization of marijuana. And then they elected you as their representatives. And five of you forgot that your duty and obligation as a representative of your people is to vote with the majority. I mean, if we've got us, uh if we're trying to create a system here where the majority can vote any way they want to and five people sitting around will ignore it, abrogate it, whatever, because they aren't representing the population and the majority when you vote no. You're representing your own agendas for whatever reason. We will see what the results of this is.
Thank you. Bill White.
Bill White, three ninety-two Anderson, pastor of the Lighthouse Church of God. I just uh thank you for allowing us these brief brief times to uh speak. I've already spoken to the other other meetings. I haven't had an opportunity to uh speak to you. First of all, I want you to know that uh I'm one who respects your office, your ability, and uh I don't say fears, but uh that's the wrong word, uh the authority that you have and the ability you have. I'm aggrieved somewhat that we're, you'd have to spend so much time trying to tame a snake that you, instead of doing things that could be constructive to uh to the community. But that seems the way it's going, and I I think thankful for all the good uh things that are being said. I've uh uh been in Ketchikan for five years. I've raised a family here, my grandkids and great-grandkids. I've been involved in community activities, never on this board. Uh but uh I'm also chaplain of the prison. I've dealt with people from uh the guttermost to the uttermost. People who were, have hit bottom. We've uh hatched them, matched them, and dispatched them with funerals and bringing their families together. And I've uh, I'm not speaking as one that doesn't understand, probation has been uh mentioned quite a bit. I was born during that time and era. Uh, it uh, it was working even that day, but there was, those who had financial concerns uh understand shiploads of booze ready to be shipped to our nation. And the minute that the boat went through, it was loaded in volume on our nation. Uh, and it has had its own running record. But um, the uh the thing that uh that I I feel that the, there's there's gonna be illegal, the the federal government, this is still, will not allow it. It's not allowed on the ships. It's not allowed to the under twenty-one. And um, I I I think that for us to uh be dealing with something that is dangerous and something as as uh effective on our lives have been on others, I think that there's a lot of sober, I think. You men and ladies, you've been elected, as the gentleman said, to represent the people. To represent uh, but we didn't elect you because you were puppets or brain dead and you you were just going to dance to whatever tune happened to be there. We elected you to make hard decisions. Decisions for the long-term betterment of our community. And in all the speeches I've heard here and there, everybody's had to acknowledge that there are dangers. There are long-term dangers. And uh that you can't skirt around. It's it's gonna be there. Right now, they say, "Well, marijuana's taking taking on body bootleggers and those who are uh bringing it in illegally." That will still happen. That will still happen. These are probably not taxpayers who are doing that. They'll, they'll get, they'll skirt around that and get their funds. So uh I I don't think that the, it's going to enhance anything except more grief. Make more drug addicts, alcoholics out of people who suddenly lose their better judgment by entering into this legal uh marijuana. Smoking is already prohibited uh for certain levels and in certain places. Some states, they, you have to uh go outside and out in the woods to to smoke. I understand that the most of it, unless it's made into a cookie, is something you have to smoke. And uh as I've heard the borough council and others talking, they don't think it's gonna be very healthy to create room for everybody can smoke at one time so that we won't expose the others. But that may be out. But uh I'm not gonna take your time. I'm, my three minutes is up. I know that. But uh I'd like to take one more minute, if I may. You ladies and gentlemen have a heavy responsibility on you. I hope you know that whatever decision you make and when you're dealing with people's bodies, minds, and their souls, that it's gonna have a great impact. And I'd like to take just another minute, I hope, that we received this free time. I'd like to say a prayer for this council. And ask God to give you personal wisdom and to help you to make decisions, sit decisions that will help your community that you represent, our young people, our children, and not complicate something else. Our Father, we just ask you to impart to this body that that can only come from above. You know the beginning, you know the present, you know the future. And Lord, we don't, can't inform you, but you've informed us, O God, that if we keep heaping things upon people that are uh change their natures, changes their lives, that there's a curse that comes with it. We don't want that curse, Lord. Ketchikan's a good place, even as it is. And I just pray that wisdom will be to this council, the borough council, and all others who make these decisions. In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Richard Wilkman.
Hello, Lord. My name is Richard Wilkman. I've been in Ketchikan since nineteen ninety-eight, lived up on Schoenbach Road since ninety-nine. And I just wanted to uh, just wanna say I was shocked to see that uh, see the five to two vote against the retail sales in Ketchikan because uh as 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 other people said before me, that it's just gonna encourage criminal uh activity here. And the retail sales would be much, much nicer than uh than having, you know, people doing dirty deals all over the place. Okay, um, I just wanted to, I found this 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 book. I've got this book called Marijuana Myths, Marijuana Facts. It was written by Zimmer in Oregon. And it's available on Amazon for one cent plus postage. Because it's it's it was published nineteen ninety-seven, but it's still very, very useful. One one review of this book on Amazon said, "This will probably become the most important and influential book on marijuana ever published." On October fifteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, conservative columnist William Buckley devoted an entire column to it, calling it "A miracle of intelligent concision." Also, in the October thirtieth issue of Rolling Stone magazine, editor Jan Wenner strongly recommends it. The October issue of Esquire magazine recommends it for info about medical marijuana. Dr. Andrew Weil calls it "an invaluable resource." Dr. Louis Lasagna, author of National, National Academy of Sciences' report on marijuana, calls it "accurate, timely, and impressive." "It is for users, parents, police, politicians, teachers, and preachers." Even though it was published in nineteen ninety-seven, it's still an excellent resource. I'd like to just read two paragraphs from the introduction. Uh during the past one hundred years, a number of independent commissions have investigated the effects of marijuana. In eighteen ninety-three, now this is a very important study, eighteen ninety-three, the British Parliament created the Indian Hemp Commission to deter determine the impact of marijuana consumption on the social and moral condition of the people of India. It was very widespread use in India. Uh, the commission concluded that the moderate use of hemp drugs is practically attended by no evil results at all. In nineteen twenty-five, a committee investigating marijuana use by US soldiers in the Panama Canal Zone said that marijuana's effects had apparently been greatly exaggerated. Twenty years later, nineteen forty-four, a panel of medical experts commissioned by New York Mayor LaGuardia also found, as LaGuardia himself put it, that the sociological, psychological, and medical ills commonly attributed to marijuana have been exaggerated. In response to increases in marijuana use in sixties and seventies, governments in the United States, Canada, England, Australia, and the Netherlands appointed commissions to evaluate the scientific evidence on marijuana's dangers to individuals and society. In nineteen sixty-nine, the British Wooton Report noted its agreement with the Indian Hemp Commission and the LaGuardia Commission. It said that the long-term consumption of cannabis in moderate doses has no harmful effect. In nineteen seventy-two, a Dutch government commission concluded that the physiological effects of the use of cannabis are of a relatively harmless nature. Also, in nineteen seventy-two, the National Commission on Marijuana and Drug Abuse, appointed by President Richard Nixon, said, "The commission is of the unanimous opinion that marijuana use is not such a grave problem that individuals who smoke marijuana or possess it for that purpose should be subject to criminal procedures." I think a lot of police agree on that too, you know, that well, one thought I had is that uh you know, hemp is really a very benign plant compared to uh to alcohol. I mean, I mean, other cannabis, smoking marijuana is is much, much more low-key than, you know, getting drunk, you know, the big difference there. Uh, a lot of people like to get high just for kicks, you know? But there are also many people who use it for uh medical benefits, uh for purposes of moral or spiritual edification. It was smoked by the high high Brahmin class in India who were priests, you know, until until British got there, at least. And it's still smoked a lot there. And in fact, they they sell it in government hemp stores in India. Uh it's it's a fact that high-minded people commit far fewer crimes than low-minded people. You know, just automatically connecting marijuana with criminality is just, it's all wrong. I mean, alcohol really messes people up, but but marijuana doesn't, doesn't really mess people up so much. It just kinda makes them peaceful and happy and nice. So to to, it's just, it's not, it's not a good comparison. And you know, the the, in the Netherlands, you know, you've all heard of pot shops, you know, you can go in and smoke there. A nineteen ninety-five Dutch government report concluded that no major change in cannabis policy was warranted. Cannabis is not very physically toxic. It mainly affects mood, consciousness, and memory. Its effect is dependent on the amount used. This is important now. Neither fatal overdoses nor physical dependency can occur. No one's, no one's ever been killed by it that they know of, and uh physical, you don't, you don't get addicted to it, you know? Cannabis use generates less aggression than drinking alcohol, and it is certainly not an automatic step on the road to the use of hard drugs. Yeah, that's just another propaganda thing, the thing about stepping stone to hard drugs. A harder drug is alcohol. Everything we know now leads to the conclusion that the risks of cannabis use cannot in themselves be described as unacceptable. So I certainly hope that you people will, you know, allow the retail sales here and uh because the alternative is is much worse. Thank you.
Kurt Tucker.
My name is Curtis Tucker. I've lived in Ketchikan for sixty-six years, live at five oh eight Washington Street. Mr. Wright pretty much said what I came here to say. I voted for legalization of cannabis. I don't use it. I don't drink. I don't smoke. But for elected officials to put out a statement that says, "I voted wrong," is completely against the Constitution of the United States of America. I voted the way I wanted to vote, and there's nobody can tell me I voted wrong. That's all I would say.
Thank you, sir. Spencer.
Good evening, council. Professor Strasberg, six eighteen, Canyon.
I don't wanna influence you, but make sure it's within three or four minutes.
Yeah, I'll do my best as usual. I'll keep it colorful, at least.
Thank you.
Um, I, you know, I was gonna, I was kinda listening to a lot of the other people and I'm, you know, I have like a billion thoughts on this matter, but I was trying to kinda figure out the ones that that uh that weren't like what everyone else is saying. I think some of the people can, I think all the arguments are really gonna be based around the same kinda thing. The most distasteful thing about that last session was probably uh Mr. Cus's remarks. With all due respect, I didn't get it, I didn't get it wrong, you know? I I voted, uh the majority of the people voted. We voted to end prohibition right here on our rock. We didn't get it right. If we got it wrong in any way, it was, if if the voter ever got it wrong, it was probably in the people that they elected to put up here and make sure that you guys were gonna do what we asked you to do. And and it comes down to a majority thing because this is a democracy. That's what it's about. That's that's what I was told I was voting for. That's that's why I tell everybody to get out and vote. And and this next year, that's gonna be my biggest goal. Running for city council was kind of a big piece, but I I realized I need to start somewhere else, and that's with changing the voter turnout. So I'm gonna be working for the next year to change voter turnout, see if we can get something higher than twenty-two percent. Which means you guys gotta think about who's gonna be voting you in. Which means you guys got to think about who's going to be voting you in if we can get this bigger population. And I think, given the fact that you riled them up a whole bunch saying the voter doesn't really matter, I bet I can get twice as many. So I'm going to go, I'm looking for a forty percent turnout, and I'm going to work really hard for the next year to see if I can do that. To make it real quick so the mayor doesn't waste too much more time. What I would like to say is that let's talk about local option. This, this thing that we're standing on going, hey, we got local option, man. We can, we can get out of this. We can railroad our personal agenda through. Local option wasn't really designed to do what you're doing with it here. Local option was designed for a small place like Metla Catl or maybe a village where a majority of the people say, hey, we don't want that here. That would stop one person from coming in going, screw you, I got the right, I'm going to do it and mess your world up, whether all of you people want that or not. And, and that's what that was reserved for. To take a city, we're a city way out in the middle of the Pioneer Woods, to take that city and say, ignore those folks who voted for that. We just want to do what we want to do. That's distasteful, you know? Good luck getting votes. That's, that's going to be a real rough one to overcome. And it's difficult for you now because you weighed in so early. How do you back up on that stuff? You guys got a really, a big deal here. Before I get too far, I'm just going to, the, I don't think your excuse is good enough. As I was listening to most of you, I think the mayor said, hey, man, I'm just not comfortable with concentrates and edibles. And then I heard a few of you kind of jump on that bandwagon, and it really just kind of boiled down to, yeah, I'm not really, I'm not hip to edibles and concentrates, you know? If this was just smoking weed, that'd be one thing, but I don't really like those kind of things. And then maybe some of the other people, I don't know, you just don't want to do it. You know, you got your mind made up, closed minded, don't want to change. And so, but I listened to that. I don't want edibles and I don't want concentrates here in town. And I'm thinking, you really think you can affect that change? If you guys ban commercial sales, that's going to stop our town from having concentrates and edibles, right? You guys, that's your agenda? That's the direction that you're headed, Bob? You said you don't want those things on our streets. And so, like, it, it burns me up for a while, and I'm thinking, well, how can I, how can I get these guys to see that what you're saying, you have an effect in the negative direction, not one in the positive direction? This is your only option to make an effect on what you don't like already. And that's to regulate it and do something differently. If you ban it and do what you've always done, you're always going to get what you always got. So about a week ago, I said, I know what to do. I'll just put the word out. Hey, can you guys round me up some edibles and concentrates? What's on the street here, you know? So I brought my bag of goodies. First thing I got, was just, this is a can of butter right here. This was made, you notice, no label except Ziploc. That's all, it's Ziploc. Okay, that doesn't tell us how much is in there or what, right? We'll just try some out, right? We'll just try that. That's what you can get here on our streets. This is part of, this is part of an edible, right? We can make anything we want with that. We can make, I already ate the brownies. I couldn't wait, but, at any rate, and just so you know, and this is, this is, this is an easy butter maker. You can just put this, it's like a teapot, man. You just put your gear in here, and in no time you got a thing of butter, and this is Mr. Harris' pre-order. I got it late this afternoon. Here's a, this one's scary. This one, this one will scare you. How about this one? These are some kind of weed pills. I, I wouldn't eat these. You know why? They remind me of pharmaceuticals. I'm as scared of pharmaceuticals as you guys are of marijuana, so I won't try them. But, but this is on the street. I put it, I put them in this bag, and they were handed to me. That's why it says four ninety-nine, but I'm sure it was like body jewelry or something. But, but these were just given to me on the street. No, no bag, no pill, I mean, no, no label, no, no, just a pill. Here you go. Try those. Not me. I'll find someone else, though. I'm sure they won't. This was one of the most interesting things. What do you suppose this is? This one came to me and I was like, hey, this one here, this is concentrates, I think. I don't know, because it's just in a white bag. It came, I was told it was concentrates. I waited till today to open it up and see what we got. But this was found in our streets, and I can't figure out, do we have someone that's packaging it in like a professional pack like that? Who the heck can do that? I wonder where this is coming from, but my guess, it's a pretty educated guess, that's dabs. That's a good dab, too. I'll try those later. But I will be careful, though, we do a little bit at a time till I figure out just how strong they are. But, um, it ain't, well, we'll be careful. We'll just try a little at a time. Maybe I'll give some to a friend or something. If he doesn't fall over dead, then I'll try some. At any rate, what you can see, is that we got all these edibles and concentrates right here on our streets. We already got them. When you say, I don't want edibles and concentrates, you're saying, I don't want responsible edibles and concentrates. This is the black market that's at work. You have one choice, either put that away or help them. If, if, this has got to be a personal agenda from a few. I hate that, with all due respect, I say that honestly. You need to rethink this thing and figure out where your agenda is, where you really want to go. Because the excuse of we don't want edibles isn't going to work. We need something a little more scientific to stand on. Otherwise, it's just going to look like a personal agenda. If it, if it's personal, you know, I think that all of the marijuana smokers, since the day it legalized on February twenty-fourth, have been respectful. Extremely respectful. The city's wishes right here. When I opened my pipe sales on February twenty-fourth, KJ came down and asked me to be respectful. We know that we can't stop you. We'd like you to be respectful. And I was respectful. I put all my stuff in the back, put walls up so kids can't see it. I don't line my stuff out in the windows. But I'm sure that if you send the message to the marijuana smokers that they don't matter, they're going to get a lot louder. They're going to be right in your face. There could be bongs along the windows. People can pull stuff out, or you can, you could walk down the street, you could give it away to church. I mean, you could be so much louder than what they are right now. They're being very respectful. And I think you guys need to be respectful of them too. At least respect their vote, because that's part of a democracy. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ruth, do it. Is Ruth here? Come on up. Spence, could you help with the mic?
Sure.
Bend it down. You can't pull it out. You just have to bend it down.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't come out?
I'm going to pick you up some weed right here. I'll get this figured out. Let's get you a little more line there. You can get it closer to.
Okay, that works. Okay, well, one thing that I've certainly been thinking for a long time is the income, the tax income from having, selling pot in town is just, like, why turn it down? What's the point of that? I, I don't, I don't understand that at all. That's one thing. And then another thing I would like to say is that I'm Jewish, not Christian. So I kind of don't appreciate the appeal to Jesus for, this is the United States of America. This is not a Christian country. It's a democracy that's open to all religions. So I really don't appreciate a pill to Jesus in a legal institution. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ruth. Next, we have Jim White.
I'm Jim White, nine eleven Forest Avenue. And, uh, the people in the city voted for it. They want it in the city. They don't want to have to go outside the city limits to buy it. And I personally, I, I smoke it once in a while, not very often, but it hurts my lungs, and I like edibles. I think edibles should be allowed. I think it's a healthier deal, and just like Spencer was saying, regulate it. Do it right, you know? That's all I can say.
Thanks, Jim. All right, that was the last person signed up. Was there anybody here that wanted to speak that didn't sign up? Seeing none? Uh, we'll move on to the agenda. Thank you, everybody. I apologize for being late. That brings us down to, we'll move to, straight to the new business, six A. Um, reconsideration, reconsideration is council action taken at the December third, two thousand fifteen, regular council meeting regarding whether to allow retail marijuana business within the city limits. Councilmember Isom, do you have a motion? Motion to reconsider.
Yes. Sorry.
You can just say, I have moved to reconsider.
Yes, I moved to reconsider that vote.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Okay, uh, we don't have discussion on a reconsideration, so we'll make our vote first. Adam Clerk.
Harris.
Again, yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
This is on reconsideration, yes.
Yes. Kifer? Gage? Isom?
Yes.
Coos?
Okay.
All right, it's now back on the table, the original motion to, um, limit, I can't remember what the original motion said.
To prohibit the retail sales of marijuana. The original motion is to prohibit retail sales of marijuana within city limits.
Anybody want to start? Judy?
And that's a good point you brought up. That, that was the original motion to prohibit retail sales of marijuana within the city limits. And I think even afterwards, I'm thinking, maybe some of us were a little confused as to what we did. But I, I meant it. I, I want to say that upfront. I did mean my vote. I was one of the five that voted to prohibit retail sales of marijuana within the city limits. And it's, it is a, uh, it's one of those issues in town right now that some people are for it, some people are against it. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't want to say more people are for it or more people are against it. It's a real, it's a real conflict among the people right now. I was even conflicted that night, but I voted to prohibit retail sales because I meant it. I meant it that night. Then something happened the next day. And I ran into somebody who, they hadn't voiced their opinion to me. They hadn't voiced their opinion at the meeting. I heard a completely different story about a couple who has tried to get medical marijuana here. And I heard a compelling life story about how it, the medical marijuana changes their quality of life when they give it to their son because it does, is, does so much good for him. And the fact that, um, sometimes they even have to smuggle it into Ketchikan to get it. And it's not that they haven't tried other things. They've tried many things. But having heard that and then talked to other people, talking to other people afterwards, I did change my mind, and I'm human. We, we can change our minds. And so, that's why, that, that day, in fact, right after I talked to her, I called you, Katie, to tell you I wanted to call for a reconsideration on the vote. And to be quite honest with you, I didn't even, I don't recall it being that specific, saying that we, as a group, decided to prohibit retail sales of marijuana within the city. Now, I thought that meant that someone would go away and craft a policy, and the policy would come back and we would vote on it. And maybe it does mean that. But that's a pretty strong statement without putting it out there to the community to, to let them, like, today. I appreciated everyone who spoke on it. And that is why I'm going to vote, um, no, if the original motion is to prohibit retail sales of marijuana within the city limits. So that's why I'll be voting no.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Dick?
Yeah, I, uh, still do not intend to change my mind. I think the report that we were given today, you look at Colorado and the problems they've got, and they've talked about nothing but problems. And I know there's people out here going to disagree because they can take another study and try to prove something else, but the use by the kids have gone up, accidents in cars have gone up, you name it, right down the list. And that report shows where that's happened in Colorado since it was legalized. The majority, the cities in Colorado also had the opportunity to opt out. And according to the report, most of them opted out. I'd admit, they can drive between towns to get it if they want it. But, uh, with that said, I, I'm not, I'm not going to change my mind on, on having it legalized in Ketchikan. But I, I will say one thing in respect for Julie. I do think that there are people that it can benefit by it from medical marijuana, and I think what we need to do is to figure out a way to get the state, if there's a way to have a medical marijuana available to those that legitimately need it, not those that just want to say I have to have it because it makes me feel good at the end of the day. So, like I say, I think we need to do two things. One, is, um, maybe go ahead and get our ordinance available to us and not do anything for it until the state gets finalized, but in the meantime, try to see if that state board can't figure out a way to allow uh, somehow or other the option of, of medical marijuana. And I also know, I talked to some of the pharmacies, there are pills and so forth available, and I know the other story there is, well, pharmaceuticals are going to rip you off. Well, it's the least ways that's safe and it does what it's supposed to. So I, I think we need to look at options for that so that the people that need it are good. But I'm still worried about the kids. There ain't anybody sitting in this room that can guarantee those kids aren't going to get it. And it went up in that report in Colorado. And they anticipate it's going to continue to go up, and it went up significantly.
Next. Dave?
Yeah, I just, I guess, either whatever way the council votes, and I want everyone to understand real clearly, it's not the final vote. Doesn't matter what the newspaper says tomorrow, or what the radio station says. We still have to have some sort of thing come back and decide, if we decide we're going to allow them, we have to regulations. If we decide we're not going to allow them, we have to regulations. So I want to make, so everyone in the sound of my voice is clear, clear, this is not a final vote, no matter how it goes. So stay tuned.
Jen, Lee?
I think, um, my biggest concern is that when this vote went into play, medical marijuana was used as the, part of the, um, standing point. But to me, it seems that the medical marijuana part of it has been getting washed under the rug. They haven't gotten the justification they deserve. It's not in the statutes for the state. It's not being addressed. And what I know about medical marijuana is you have patches that give you, kind of like the one you had, but it has written on it the information, what's in it, how much. Because there's so many variables for different, um, medical, um, needs. And to me, that's part of my big, I would really like to see, though, that in there because I don't think that the people who need it for medical are going to get what they need and, and will be fighting for their rights at some point. And so to me, it's like, um, what, where, where are we on that? Um, who's going to, who's going to voice up and say, hey, what about the medical aspect? My other issue with it is, um, when we have to, when we have to bring in a testing facility, which we'll have to do if we do it, who's going to pay for that? Who's going to do it? Is it the taxpayers that are going to have to pay for that? Or is it going to be a, uh, private enterprise? And, and I don't know. I think, because taxpayers, we're all just a little.
All right, anybody else? Julie?
One more thing. I just think it's, it's premature right now. And I, I got a message from somebody. I think I need to read it. He said he tried to call in, and so I, it's just short. It says, "My wife is a cancer patient and a veteran. It would be lovely for there to be one place to buy legal marijuana. I want this as a memoranda for record for the council to consider this, it's, and in its decision. There may be cancer patients on the tour ships that also benefit. I appreciate your efforts on this new, on this new age. Hope you come to a favorable decision." And that was, he's not from Ketchikan, but it's Richard Trojan from Craig. He owns a business, and his wife is a veteran.
Well, Craig's advisory vote was to sell it within the community, but they voted, their advisory was against manufacturing, so it's really sad. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I, I voted to reconsider because I happened to run into
Yeah, I, I voted to reconsider because I happened to run into a number of people. Kyle Johansson was the first. And he said, "It's the process. Want to make sure that the process cleans, whether it changes the vote here at the table or not, that, that needs to be addressed." And, and I didn't disagree with him. So the way it was on the new business item, you know, it was, may have been unclear to a lot of people that anything on new business is fair for a vote. So not that the city did anything wrong, but in order to honor that process. I also had some conversations with the Alcohol and Beverage Control Board in regards to regulations and timing. Presently, they have turned the regulations over to the Lieutenant Governor and the Department of Law. They have a period of time where they'll go through those. And then the, the governor, or the Lieutenant Governor will, will sign those. And then there's a period of time for it to be enacted. The deadline, of course, for accepting, I believe, applications is February twentieth. There's a ninety day period for that. So before anything would ever be brought forward as an actual permit would be May twentieth or something like that, if everything followed the timeline. I think that there are things changing, things being added, things being discussed within those regulations as we're moving forward. So what I would like to do at this time is defer further action on this until such time as those regulations are signed. And so we know basically what we're dealing with, what we may or may not ban. And so I guess we have a full story in front of us. You know, there's a lot of discussion about the, the people's vote and what local options mean. The people voted on initiative that had no regulations attached to it at all. It took the state of Alaska a year to put those regulations together. The local option is whether or not the communities agree with the regulations far enough to restrict it, whatever it's going to be. We talk about treating it as alcohol. We've really been successful with legal alcohol. All the alcohol I drank as a kid was bought out of a liquor store by somebody. I think putting it in a retail shop isn't going to change any of that.
Do we have a, before we continue, Tom, do we have a second for that motion?
Motion to defer.
Anybody, Bob, did you have something to finish?
I just think it's prudent as far as to go through this process. And again, even if the city of Ketchcan decided to ban it, there are other, two other communities on the island that have the option to say yes. So it's not a, a ban for the whole island.
Now, is there a timeframe for the state?
The state.
We have no time. This is deferred, but not to a specific time?
I think February, isn't it?
Well, they're going to do it, they're, they're going to have something out by February twentieth and, you know, all the other stuff going into it. So I think that a meeting in March, first or second meeting in March would be fine with me to bring this back.
So let's make it defer until March. Ju, Judy?
So I just want to be clear. So we felt comfortable enough voting to not allow it the last time, but now we want to defer it. Why? I just don't understand that.
Well, again, I think it's to the fact that the regulations aren't out yet, so.
They weren't out last time that.
Yeah, and I'm still comfortable.
We just keep voting for the prohibition, but I don't get a vote, so. But we do have a motion to defer, so we're going to have to deal with that first. Color roll, please.
Severson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Harris?
No, ma'am.
Isom?
No.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
I'm confused now.
Do you want to defer until the state regulations are out?
Yes.
Okay, the deferral passes four to three.
And your honor, just to be clear, when this comes back, the motion will still be?
It'll be the same motion. The motion will be to prohibit, but we'll take it up after the state finishes their regulatory, I guess. Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, that brings us back down to the regular agenda, unfinished business versus five A, which we will pass over. You bet. Hold one more. And then we have the KPU budget five B, and we'll take up that next as soon as we get back in five minutes. I've been instructed by the clerk that we have two motions under the general government items. Twenty, no, two and three. That's probably, no, excuse me.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, got another picture. Item, we need motion twenty-five.
It's on the floor. The motion's on the floor. This was the motion that the city council directed city manager, finance director, to take. It's the overtime plan.
So the motion's already on the floor.
All right, motion's on the floor. Did anybody have any questions on that and are ready to vote on it?
It's number twenty-five, and it was the request for Carl to bring us back the program as far as monitoring overtime.
Correct. Are you guys, if you guys aren't ready, we can hold it off till Thursday.
I just feel so happy at this point.
Oh, twenty-five, that's the one for.
Charles overtime memorandum.
The first suggestion was that we might cut across the board, and then we came up with a.
Yep.
Proposal to. Your regulator will watch it.
Yep.
And anything over a certain amount, we'd have to.
Will they bring back to us, yeah.
Yeah. And this budget, it's the second, it's, what is it, number four?
Yeah.
On this agenda?
Yeah.
Well, your honor.
Yes.
Overall, I, I like the work that's been put into this, but I'd like to see it maybe at seventy-five percent. And I think that, I don't like the idea of cutting overtime right across the board because I didn't feel that, I mean, some departments, I think, were a little, I don't know what word I'm looking to use. I don't want to say careful because I, I don't really know what goes into telecommunications, but I found their budget to be excessive, and I would like to cut their overtime budget this year by at least fifteen percent.
Which one?
Number one, page two.
Yeah.
Bob?
So we have two items on the table here, kind of sort of. So if we were to approve this operating capital budget overtime update, number twenty-five, that would not preclude, and then it'll cut any of the departments at this point in the budget, would it?
And we can cut anytime we want.
Just checking to make sure.
This is brought to management, how to start dealing with it.
Would we bring those up at separate items, pass one and then do the other, or would we add it to?
We can do it either way. I'm, I mean, I'm willing to give this a try with Carl before we go zapping individual budgets, but it's up to the council. And Judy was thinking, instead of making eighty-five percent, have it seventy-five. Dick?
Just a comment. I, I think I'm probably willing to deal with the Carl's memo as it is, but I would like to request that at some point in time, and it doesn't have to be during the budget thing, but that if Bob can create a historical use by departments of overtime for however many years back you could go, say, three or four years back, so we can see the trend, if somebody up or down, playing a game, or whatever it is, might help us to see if something took a jump or someone just played a game. But I think we need a trend.
Bob?
Dick, you want that, I mean, the budget report we got before with this one, do you want a summary by department?
I only want departments. I don't want.
You don't want the individual?
No, no, I just want the departments. No, I don't want, there's only a, probably eight or ten of them, I'd even want to look at.
Okay, this item is on the table. Do we have anything else?
So did Judy's seventy-five percent was offered as an amendment?
No, it was not.
No, let's just do it as is.
Okay. Color roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Coos?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Severson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
No.
Okay, that passes six to one. Now, Madam Clerk, you said there's a second item in the.
Number thirty-two.
Number thirty-two. All right, that's surface repair, and that's the pavement overlay update, upping the budget from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council amendment two sixteen, general government operating capital budget by increasing public first street division, pavement overlay, surface repair, capital improvement project by two hundred thousand from four hundred to six hundred thousand.
Second. Move it in second. And Bob, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I, I was the one that originally requested this. And, and the fact is, is at four hundred, even at six hundred thousand, we're not keeping up with the disrepair of our streets. Having not approved the replacement of the fire vehicle at this particular time, I think it would have been, I think it's more prudent to use that money for street repairs.
Anybody else?
Where's the money coming from?
Public works sales tax.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes.
So is it money we have to use or?
No. Anybody else? Color roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Severson?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
All right, that passes six to one. Now, we're into KPU. We have a revised appropriation on budget update number two. Never change in our KPU wireless stuff.
Number two.
Yeah, we're reducing.
I move the city council revise the two sixteen, Ketchcan Public Utilities Operating in Capital Budget Department appropriation request by telecommunications account number six fifty oh one as detailed in General Manager's memorandum dated November sixteenth, two fifteen, resulting in a net reduction of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Bob, do you want to add anything?
No, I do not.
Anybody else? All over.
Gage?
Yeah.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes seven oh, and that brings us to budget update number three. Our non-re, representative employees in the city side for two thousand three, sixteen, had a two percent, we gave them a two percent increase on cost of living. This does the same thing for nonrepresentative in KPU. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move the city council amend the two sixteen, Ketchcan Public Utilities Operating in Capital Budget by increasing the cost of personal services and benefits by forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen in order to provide two percent cost of living adjustment to the classified nonrepresentative employees of KPU.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move it in second. Bob, do you want anything?
No, this was following in the same line as what we did with general government treating people similarly.
Anybody else? Color roll.
Coos?
No.
Severson?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Kifer?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. Madam Clerk, do we have any other updates?
No.
Very good. That brings us back to the budget. Which, let's see what page we stopped on. Do we remember where we stopped in KPU?
We were at CIP, huh?
Telecommunications. Telecommunications. All right. I don't even know how far we got into it, I think. Yeah. All right. Does anybody have anything else in telecommunications? Floor is open.
So does that include the Whitman Lake search up stuff too?
You can bring it up. We've already gone electric, but if you had a question.
I just had a question about the spill. What is that?
Tom?
With the over, you know, like the spill over, that.
I'm not sure I understand the question, counselor.
The cause of the spill, like what causes the spills, and how they get traced back to operations at the Whitman Lake?
Andy, do you want to?
Councilmember Gage, I can answer your question. Andy Donato, KPU Electric Division Manager. So first, the two, the two controlling lakes would be Taiyi and Swan. And Swan has a dam, and within the dam is a geometric opening called an OG. And by knowing exactly the height of the water in that OG, they can measure precisely the spill. And they measure this spill in, well, there's a variety of different measurements, but ultimately, they translate into a certain amount of electrical energy that could be made. So the way the true up works, so that SEPA is not harmed financially, if SEPA is able to supply the power, they're not constrained by a broken line, or the generator's not out of service, if they're able to supply the power, and we are running Whitman, then we owe them a true up because we have displaced their sales. And the method is, is looking at spill. So if they are spilling, surely they have the ability to, to, to generate unless their generator's down or their line is open. And those situations happen, and we, we, we take, we take note of those, and then we remove those days from the true up at the end of the true up cycle. So we true up quarterly, and then financially at the end of the year. Actually, it comes up in February?
Payback through March one.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
So, so basically, you're making power and they're making power, but they trump? Like, so if they make power at the same time, but they're not getting, there's not getting used, we pay for it?
Correct.
And it's just for the Whitman hydroelectric project, and then our other hydros. So if we're operating in Whitman at a time, they can supply us energy, that's when the true up kicks in.
So we don't usually use our Whitman, or? I'm just catching up because.
Sure. Sure. So this goes back a little ways. There's something called FERC licenses. So these projects are identified by a FERC license. So Whitman is a project, Beaver Falls in Silvis is another FERC license, Ketchcan Lakes is a FERC license, Swan Lake is a FERC license. Turns out that as Fordam Poole morphed into SEPA, they grandfathered our, our existing licensed generators. Now, why Whitman wasn't included in that, I know that this city council, some sixteen years ago, put forth the initiative to get the license from, for FERC. And that process just kept moving along until it finally came to fruition. But it was never identified with SEPA, and so it was a new project with SEPA. And so therefore, it has to deal with an order of dispatch. So SEPA allows us to dispatch energy from our existing licenses first, and then they supply whatever's left by contract. It's called a power sales agreement. If we dispatch power out of Whitman, and they're capable of dispatching. Sure. So this goes back a little ways. Uh, there's something called FERC licenses. So these projects are identified by a FERC license. So Whitman is a project, uh, Beaver Falls and Silvers is another FERC license, Ketchikan Lakes is a FERC license, Swan Lake is a FERC license. Uh, turns out that, uh, as Fordam Poole morphed into SEPA, uh, they grandfathered our, our existing licensed generators. Now, why Whitman wasn't included in that, I know that this City Council, uh, some sixteen years ago, um, put forth the initiative to get the license from, um, uh, for FERC, and that process just kept moving along until it finally came to fruition. Uh, but it was never identified with SEPA, and so it was a new project with SEPA, and so therefore, it has to deal with an order of dispatch. So, uh, SEPA allows us to dispatch energy from our existing licenses first, and then they supply whatever's left by contract. It's called a power sales agreement. Uh, if we dispatch power out of, uh, Whitman, and they're capable of dispatching power, we have displaced their sales, and so that we don't create harm to them financially, we pay them that money that they would have had in a true-up. Is that close? Everybody's nodding their heads?
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, just, just for some information on that, power sales agreement was something that all three communities, when we took over the, the two projects, signed on to and agreed to. The, the power sales agreement was, um, part of what was the collateral for the bonds that the communities borrowed by, by the projects from the state. The reason why there had to be a true-up is when they sold those bonds, they told the bond people that the guarantee was that we were gonna buy power from SEPA first before we bought it from anyplace else. And they exempted the existing hydro projects of each of the communities. We have three, four, and Peter Burke has one.
Right.
That were listed in the documents as. So Whitman wasn't, for whatever reason, but that was something the cities agreed to back when they took over that. So when we first came up with the back of Whitman, we thought, well, maybe we just be able to run it. But the covenant was in there, and the bond, and our, our, our council said that the bond didn't allow us to just let it run there. So in order to make it work, there are such things called the power sale, I mean, the true-up agreement that we can do, and so that satisfied the bondholders that we're not displacing sales. Basically what it says.
Bob explained that there's a background to it, and that's what I think Julie and Janely needed to know, is that we had to deal with the bonds that SEPA had to deal with, and, and what they had to do in order to, to finance those bonds, and that's just part of that power sales agreement.
All right. Thank you very much, Andy. All right.
Yeah, it is like that. It's a hit of twister.
All right. Um, since I have anything in, um, telephone, how about capital?
Do, Mr. Mayor, do you want to do water before you get to capital?
Oh, I miss water. Sorry. Let's go to water. We don't want those water guys to come here for no reason.
Your Honor, before we get into water, can I, can I make a comment?
You bet.
I want to make sure that everybody understands that the budget that we're working on is predicated on three rate increases. We got our wastewater-
Water.
Water and electric.
Correct.
And those are factored into this. So as we move through the budget, when we approve the budget, and since we've approved and directed the management to draft the ordinances to raise those rates, is that correct?
If the budget is approved relative to what we propose for rate increases, they will come back and jam the numbers.
And I know in the past, we got into a situation where we went through the budget, and then we decided to, to cut the rates that we proposed, which affected the whole budget, which affected reserves, so, um, I guess-
I got this one, sure.
So I, I'm just, I just wanted, you know, like we go into the water rates, this, this one in particular, because it was losing money, is based on that rate, and so when you go through it, I guess if you don't want to have that rate increase, you're gonna have to cut the extra ones, but, yeah. Thank you.
Anything in water? It really isn't a very big department.
No. We don't have a lot to give.
Anything in water?
Actually, I think I s- they actually lowered their, some of their stuff by seventy-five percent.
Bob, I think I asked this before, but when we did the five fifteen oh two and the five fifteen oh four, um, kind of a new thing with machinery and equipment and building, did we reduce something in the, I don't know where we took that out of before. I know that you were able to break it out here. I, I didn't know if it was in, it was fifty thousand for one and five thousand for the other. Were those in a different account at some place before, and it just, you just split them up for?
Pre-conversion to the new accounting system, there were less accounts. And you're right, when we did the first transition, those numbers were jockeyed around into the new accounts.
Yeah, those, were those under just maintenance materials, or?
I don't know if you remember the old account eighty-nine, materials and services?
Mm-hmm.
That was a, it was a huge account. They had a whole bunch of different stuff in it, and what we did is we tried to pull that out, so it did a little bit more information about how materials and services is spent.
And so the, the overall materials and services, because I know we didn't have enough account numbers in the old thing to break something up.
Right.
So we just broke that one into pieces, and this was the result of that.
Yeah, we tried to identify by building, uh, equipment, uh, infrastructure.
Okay.
More better information about what we're spending on material, on material and services than what it's for.
Thank you, Bob.
If you don't have anything else on that, um, SEPA, the capital's open for discussion, and if anybody has any questions anywhere else in this budget, we're open for it.
I'm just, yeah.
Water definitely doesn't have much.
Yeah, Lou, one question.
Rob?
Deal with telecommunications and, and the one we talked a little bit about last meeting was that normal growth in repairs, there's about six items there, and I believe it said that those are down there rather than being up under maintenance because the feds have to have us capitalize it. Is that what I'm getting? So it's a kind of a more or less a federal requirement to meet their needs rather than showing what it is?
Yeah, I think just from, just general financial rules, there's, you know, gaps, there's what, there's capitalization limits, and what has to be capitalized and what doesn't need to be capitalized. For the telecommunications specifically, these different categories do represent separate, what they call part FCC part thirty-two accounts, so it, it's designed to map to the FCC's chart of accounts.
And we report that to them somehow, whether it's capitalized, and that's how we get some money back from them?
Yes, annually, we do a cost study, and our rate base is, is based on each of those classifications, and what our net, net plan in each of those classifications is.
Okay, thanks.
Your Honor?
You bet.
Yeah, this one probably is for Andy. It's under electric. And we're looking at, I'm looking at the substation transformer testing, Andy. And, um, this is page C four. And this funding level, uh, allows for two substation transformers to be tested each year. Is, is it seventy-five thousand dollars to test transformers?
Well, there's a dub- excuse me, uh, there's a number of tests, and, uh, i- if you recall, uh, maybe in our, in our SEPA works, where they did double testing?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so it's a very high-level test where they test the dielectric strength of the bushings as well. You know, so, so one of the things that we do, um, biannually is, um, is oil dissolved gas.
Yeah.
That's real simple, inexpensive relatively speaking, but these would be much, much more comprehensive tests. And, and, uh, so much of the cost is to bring all that test equipment here and stage the people here, 'cause we don't, we don't, don't do it locally. So you bring a group in, uh, most likely from the Washington area.
Is this large equipment, or suitcase-type size?
It is, but it's large.
Okay.
And, and it's large only because the voltages are, are very high, so the distances between things are, are high.
I guess, I'm just, I'm just thinking, this is gonna be ongoing, Andy, and you're talking seventy-five thousand per year to try to keep up with this thing, and if a lot of it is associated with equipment, and I don't know what this equipment costs, it, would it be something that we'd be better off having? No, it doesn't work that way. I was hoping it's something we could have, and we'd bring the specialists in, and they get, we'd have the equipment available, and bingo bango, we can get through it, but, okay, that answered that. Thank you.
Andy, just to follow up, and you're saying you've got fifteen of those to be tested, and we can see where you've got most of them tested in the years out, but how often do you have to test them once they've been tested?
On a five-year cycle.
So every five years, you gotta test them?
That level. We, we'll be doing dissolved gas analysis a couple of times during the year. Let me just defer a second here. Mark, am I, uh, am I speaking correctly, or the? About fifteen transformers?
Yeah, let me, let me correct.
So we have all this, all the, uh, all the substation transformers and the step-up transformers, okay. And one grounding transformer in Bailey, yeah. I'm sorry, Counselor Murkus.
Okay, so anyway, you got, you're showing fifteen substation transformers, and, and it says it hasn't been tested for many years, and I was trying to figure out how often you have to test them, and is this like maybe Bob is looking for, is this seventy-five thousand dollars gonna be ongoing forever?
It's probably a good number. There's additional, you see, you mentioned those tests, there's an additional test. About every third, every thirty years, you, uh, you drain the oil out and re-gasket the transformers. The only ones that we've ever done so far was in Ketchikan here. When I first got here, we thought we'd have to replace that transformer. They, they, through the dissolved gas analysis, it was producing, um, acetylene, and, uh, I wanted a, a, an opportunity to look inside and see if it wasn't something that we couldn't repair, and it turns out it was. So, uh, we did a gasket repair, a gasket change, put new oil in it. Uh, it turns out that the arcing, sparking was in the tap changer, we repaired that, and so, you know, we got maybe, maybe another thirty years in that transformer. But anyway, so we have transformers in the system, every thirty years, we should be doing this.
Okay. But, but you're saying that if we, if we have, right here, you're out at five years, so this is gonna be an ongoing cost every year, it's not something that we're gonna go for this budget cycle, then it will be done. It's ongoing. Yeah, it costs to do a business, I understand, thank you. Do we have to do this to the mobile substations that we have?
We do. And we do, we do test those, yes.
Anything else?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Andy, are we just going to encapsulate the asbestos on the Beaver Falls Powerhouse exterior, or are we gonna have to remove all that? Sorry to keep making you get out.
We really have some mixed opinion on the, on the exterior of the Beaver Falls building. Um, it would be nice to abate it and walk away and know that we don't have an asbestos issue there. I'm afraid that that's too costly. So the easiest thing to do here is to encapsulate it, put the labels on it. We also have, I don't know if you've heard here recently, we identified some areas within the Bailey Powerhouse also that have asbestos, and so, uh, those may be small enough in scope, we can abate it. For now, we put stickers on everything, and, uh, so, so I, I know, I know that didn't answer your question. I think the least expensive solution is to encapsulate it for now, right? If you go out there, it looks pretty bad right now, we gotta do something.
But you're gonna put a metal siding over it?
I think, uh, maybe an epoxy coating.
Okay.
I, I, my, my idea is a coating as opposed to a metal siding.
What kind of coating is that?
It's, it's a, it's a, 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 it's a paint, yeah, that would seal it. So you wouldn't get the friable asbestos to come through.
Bob?
Um, I'm looking at page C twenty-two, and we're talking about doing some additions to the Ward Cove substation, and it's talking about increased capacity of the station to meet the growing load. Is, is that portion of North End, um, growing dramatically, Andy?
One more time?
Uh, it, it's talking about, um, the Ward Cove substation expansion.
What we have in mind there, you know, we saved the pieces parts out of the old Bailey substation. In particular, we saved the five KV transformer-
BTH?
BTH.
BTH, okay, yeah.
Before we made it supersized. And, uh, and we saved the, the regulators, the, uh, voltage regulators also. So, uh, our plan was, as economic growth takes place in Ward Cove, and there's always a plan, um, what we would do, uh, as we outgrew that, that, uh, station, we would divide it in half. Right now, it's got a feeder north and a feeder south. We would actually, uh, use the, uh, the old transformer that we are restoring and make one train the north and one train the south. So we'd have a five KV tra- five MVA transformer north and a five MVA transformer south. So we would literally, literally double the size of that station for very little money, since we already had the pieces parts.
Presently, I think there's an expansion, a project going on, on, uh, Ward Lake Road, as you first go up.
Right.
And they're gonna move the pellet mill and kiln. Is, is that gonna change that substation's?
It'll use up some of the capacity. You know, we're not there yet, but we're, we at least have, we've got the pieces parts. The other issue that we have there is, uh, the fellow Omat property stripped all the trees off, and so, um, there's an erosion issue, and, and, uh, the mud, uh, moves up along the back fence of that substation. So the other, the other issue is to, uh, uh, dig down, build a trench, build a gravity wall, hold that back. Uh, and then also, it turns out that, uh, we, we looked at the, uh, we call it the, the deeds. So we have a, um, gosh darn, what do they call that here? We have a, uh, uh, access to that property to the, to the immediate north. It's pretty sizable, it's about forty acres, and, uh, we have access to that for, for anything to do with the utilities or permits to the utilities.
Do we have any recourse against the property owner behind us?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any recourse to the property owner behind us?
Not that I know of.
Okay, because I think he created that situation, and anything to prevent the potential for a slide in that area, yeah.
Know what the borough has in terms of site development permits, and that's, that's probably an ongoing issue that I'm sure you're familiar with.
So, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Take your place.
I wanted to, uh, to bring something to the council's attention, uh, in respect to the deferral of the marijuana issue, which is maybe a, I don't know if it'd be a conit, you know, a bit of a conundrum, or a hidden trap, or may not matter at all.
Okay.
But the, uh, the statute that was put in place by the initiative says that the board, the marijuana board, should begin accepting and processing applications to operate marijuana establishments one year after February twenty-fourth, twenty-fifteen. So I think that would be February twenty-fifth of twenty-sixteen. In respect to people applying, uh, for permits for these operations, the statute also says within forty-five to ninety days after receiving an application or renewal application, the board shall issue an annual registration applicant, unless the board finds the applicant's not compliant with regulations enacted to their regulations. Or the board is notified by relevant local government, the, that the applicant is not compliant with ordinances or regulations made pursuant to AS thirty-eight two-ten, and in effect at the time of the application. And, uh, two-ten is what we've been referring to as the local option, uh, provisions. So, that raises at least, uh, a couple of questions or things I think the council at least needs to be aware of. With the action to defer as it now stands, there would not be, uh, a local option in effect, says, you know, at, at the time of application. Well, one way to look at that is if the local option isn't, is not in effect at the time it's submitted, um, it wouldn't be applied to that application. Or you could argue for a broader view, that at the time, the application would, could mean while it's pending. But in any event, theoretically at least, it could be decided as early, uh, well, actually within any, any point, but it says within forty-five to ninety days after. I don't know if that sets forty-five as the minimum amount, it, it would seem to. But let's say there is such an application, and there's not a local option in place, and for some reason, the board would grant it within forty-five days, if this body's not considered the issue and acted by some order, ordinance that would be in effect at a minimum for its granted, if everything else was spent, that application would be okay. Now, I think we could go back and apply, or exercise or write any type of local option in the future, um, but that could raise another set of, set of issues. And this may all be theoretical, but I thought you should be aware that there's a bit of a conundrum presented by the timing that this council is considering, and the possibility at least that applications could be in and even conceivably granted, before there'd be time for at least our normal ordinance process to run its course, which, you know, will take two readings and then thirty days, and the clerk would post it in the interim.
So when does the state post have all those regulations done, once their deadline date?
Well, and council members, Seersen probably knows better than I do, but I think the regulations were to be, to be developed at some point, the end of November. I mean, they've been adopted by the board, but they're left to undergo review.
So we don't have, I mean, they can apply before these things are all finalized?
They can apply under the statute on February twenty-sixth. Depending on what's council's wishes may be, we need a larger timeframe under our ordinance procedure to.
What do you recommend?
I don't have a recommendation, I just want you to know.
Well, I mean, our idea was to, um, postpone this until the process of the state is complete, and then go ahead and make our decision. Um, if people are going to be able to apply and get a license before we've made our decision, I think we're going to have to adjust that to make the, um, deferral, you know, into February. And I'll let Bob, Bobby, anything?
Well, I, I, understanding it's not necessarily a, a recommendation, but, and with the caveat that in my, uh, correspondence with the executive director up there, we're in some kind of unknown, if not quicksand, in how this all fits together with the, with the local governments. You could, I believe, have an ordinance with the prohibition and a sunset, such that it would expire if the council didn't take action by a certain date. On the top, and I did, but the one way to arrive to your intended result, and it may very well be that none of this pans out as I suggest, but.
I understand.
Theoretically, I guess it's there.
Bob?
Yeah, actually, at our, um, meeting tonight, the advisory board, um, a couple of things were brought up. One of them was the suggestion of a deferral with the subset clause. See how everything pans out with these regulations moving forward, the pitfalls that other areas are having, sometimes try to learn from their mistakes, was one of the options. Um, the other one, of course, was, the way the regulations are right now, it's probably self-limiting, and, and the fact that you just let those stand and, and limit the process. Um, inside the city of Ketchikan, there's very few areas that you could, uh, probably have a commercial establishment. Um, the people that were talking today about having shops on, on Water Street, um, they're not in a, an area where they could do retail sales, that doesn't work. Um, so, I guess the, the thing to do would be to have correspondence with the ABC Board and Department of Law, and see how that fits in with the present dates on the regulations. See if, see if it works or not, I don't know.
Can you talk to them before our meeting on Thursday?
Could I? Yeah, I can, I can try.
Thank you.
No, I mean, they're, they're just, when I've been able to get all of them, they've been, they've been very helpful, very thoughtful, it's just a little bit short. If there's a slot to talk about this on Thursday, it'd be fine. I'm extremely skeptical that this is going to make any difference as a practical matter, uh, but I felt the council should be aware that those statutes are out there and what they say.
Can you give us, if you talk to them again, can I, give this a report on it, or?
Yeah, I just don't know that there's a spot saved on the, on the agenda, but.
Um, I'll make sure you, you got her attorney's comments, you can come and talk all you want.
All right.
But I'm not making a thing for us to make any, I'm doing the action.
Well, that's, I just, I just didn't want this body to adjourn tonight without having an understanding, there's some niceties here that I'm not sure people are aware of, that's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mitch.
There's a lot we know.
All right. And that brings us to council member comments, Dick.
Uh, no, I'd just like to thank the staff for some of the information that we've requested, um, being provided, and, um, I'll see everybody Thursday night.
Judy?
Not a thing.
Generally.
Well, I won't be here Thursday.
Oh, I will miss you. I hope that I might vote.
Huh?
I might be able to vote.
Paul, you can call him.
I'll be actually on a jet, or in Seattle waiting for the plane to port.
There you go, you can call him, he'll be sure.
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Julie?
Nothing.
Bob?
Um, again, the Marijuana Advisory Board met tonight, they had good discussion, there was, um, a small attendance, a few public comments, um, some, those people, most of them were here for tonight's meeting. Um, there was the, uh, the discussion of the chicken and the egg, whether or not you could permit a grow operation without having a plan for a testing operations, and, uh, there were two schools of thought on it, and, and the fact that, yes, you could ultimately have a cultivation license prior to getting a, a testing facility in your community. Uh, but again, the question would be, if there was no testing facility, what would they do with those materials? You know, so.
Give them away.
And, and the list of regulation.
The KG's got some guts.
The list of regulations involved in, in moving forward are, are a big hurdle for any type of a business operation. We did have, uh, uh, you know, a, opinion of a person that works closely with the tour industry, and he stated that he didn't think that the people that were getting off those ships would be here strictly to buy marijuana. He says those people are here to live the Alaska adventure, and, and it may not be the population they expect. I mean, there's certainly going to be some, but, um, that's not why those people are here. Most of them are coming probably from an area where it's already medically legal, if not recreationally legal.
Dave? KJ?
Nothing I can say out loud.
Very good. Yes, Dick?
One comment, the report that we were provided, that's about that thick, was laying there from Terrence. Can we make that a part of our minutes, so that if people want to read it, they can come online and read it?
The hundred and eighty-two pages. It's, it, um, we might be able to put a link in the minutes where they could link to it.
That'd be probably, yeah.
And they may have it on their website, so you could link to their website.
Yeah, let's make sure that there's a link for people that wanted to question what they're talking about.
So five-fifty report, that's, never mind. All right, it's mayor comments, and I just want to thank everybody for being patient with me tonight.
So is the board.
We won, I won and own retired again. Um, and I thank everybody for the time, we'll see you guys on Thursday, and Richard?